Okay, yeah.
Too late?
However you want to handle it.
No.
How do we not know what?
How much your love?
He gave us the five seconds.
All right. Good morning. It's Tuesday, February 20th. 20th, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
Amen. All right, we've got some minutes to prove.
Move to prove the minutes from the February 13th Commissioner meeting and the February 14th Special Commissioners meeting.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion, changes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. County engineer, and we have Andy Conrad here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first being establishing a bridge load limit on a bridge in Medina County, determining the necessity to close Fen Road, and the determining the necessity to close Mark's Road for a sewer and water line project.
All right. Move to approve the three resolutions?
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
And just as a quick thing, here's a copy of my annual report from 2023 for you. By all means, I did put it up on the website. If there's anything that you have questions on, feel free to reach out to me. One of the bigger things is we're still getting delays on getting equipment, vehicles, materials. We're redoing traffic signals and just get the polls is about 12 to 14 months for the polls. We ordered a bucket truck about a year, year and a half ago. We got the cabin chassis. We're still waiting for the parts to put the bucket together. So that's going to be about two-year wait for the bucket truck. So things are still delayed when we're trying to get things. So we're trying to look further in the future at some of our needs and make sure that we're ordering before we need it. But if you have any questions, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, I see that with the bridge data, you do have, with the 282 bridges, and you do inspect those every year, right?
We do, we do. We're required by law to look at those every year. And that's something that, as part of the process, though, the one resolution for posting the one bridge is a steel truss bridge. And because of the size of some of the fire trucks that are now in the county, we're required to, it's for a loading called an EV3, which is a three-axle fire truck that are really, really heavy. So that was the one that we were posting for is just for the fire truck.
Got it, got it. All right, very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Holly Muir, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one at Job and Family Services and one in Sanitary, three rate increases, two at Job and Family Services and one in Sanitary, one return from leave and transit, two resignations, one at Office for Adults and one at County Home. Second resolution is revising the Commissioners' Employment Manual Vehicle Safety Policy. And the third resolution is approving a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Medina County Board of Developmental Disability and the Medina County Achievement Employees Association, OEA NEA.
Move to approve the three resolutions?
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? I just wanted to verify, and Matt checked it out for me, I think it was on Friday, whenever I called. Regarding the employment manual and the vehicle safety policy, that does apply to the sheriffs.
Every vehicle.
Every vehicle, that, as well as the progressive discipline for any of those infractions? Okay. All right, wanted to make sure.
All right.
And then I guess the only other thing I noted was that we, in our packet, we had two and three in the opposite.
Yes. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Still three.
Yep, we got all three.
All right. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Hope everybody had a wonderful holiday. We have eight resolutions for your consideration today. The first one is an expenditure adjustment. The IT fund paid for a new server, and it's now time to move that over to solid waste. Our second resolution is revenue adjustments for various funds. This is due to Clerk of Courts having a computer issue with their accounting system that has been taken care of, as far as I am aware. Our third resolution is creating the LeadSafe Ohio Program Grant and authorizing its appropriations. We received a grant from the state of Ohio in the amount of $802,000. Our fourth resolution is for the CHIP grant for planning in the amount, now there are two for this. One is for $269,000, and that is our CDBG funds allocated through the CHIP program. Our fifth resolution will be the Home Grant, which is an additional $481,000 that gets allocated for that. We share that responsibility with the city of Wadsworth. Our sixth resolution is $30,000 grant towards, from CHIP for the lead abatement program. And our seventh resolution is expenses of county officials. JFS has a fraud conference in Newark. And our eighth and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,245,031.63.
Move to approve the eight resolutions?
A second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Thank you. Very good, thank you. Next, Pat Springer, our Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have two resolutions for your consideration. The first one is for the purchase of six police interceptor units for the Medina County Sheriff's Office. We had public bid openings last week, and the lowest and best bid was for Montrose Ford Auto Group at a unit price of $42,414.44 per unit for a total cost of $254,486.66. And those are available immediately upon approval.
Good.
The second resolution for your consideration is for the 10-seat passenger van to be utilized by the Medina County Veteran Service Association. Bus Service Incorporated was the lowest and best bid at $77,471, and that is available 180 days upon your approval.
Okay. Move to approve both resolutions?
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, very good. Thanks. Department Updates, Bethany Dentler.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to start my first quarterly report to the Commissioners this year with an overview of the economic development activity we saw in 2023 and provide an update from this year-to-date. So compared to 2022, Medina County's capital investment was down from the record levels that we saw in 2023, but it was actually right on target with a historically healthy year. So last year, despite global economic concerns and higher interest rates, we did see $230 million in new capital investment announced in Medina County as committed investments. And we define that as including new machinery and equipment, as well as new real property or property improvements. Those projects represent 350 planned new jobs in the county and 745 retained jobs with just over 791,000 square feet of physical space absorbed or built in 2023. Looking at the economic impact of the new annual payroll from those created jobs, we expect to see over $21 million of new consumer spending in the county on professional and financial services, household goods, housing construction, as well as transportation and utilities. I'm also pleased to say that we are starting 2024 rather strong with the announcement of 19 projects in Medina County that represent $48 million in new capital investments just since the beginning of January. So we're practically almost at a quarter of what we were last year, and we've only, we're a month and a half in. Those projects represent 85 new jobs and $2 million in new annual payroll. We do continue to see development interest in all corners of the county, and we certainly appreciate the Commissioner's support in helping us to create new economic development tools like the new CRA Zone in Harrisville Township. I believe there's a lot of opportunity in that community, and we're currently working on several different fronts to enhance the infrastructure in that area to support potential growth. We do gain a lot of business intelligence by meeting with executives, and last year, our staff met with 201 companies. We also have, we've already met with a number, and we have quite a number planned for the first quarter as well. We do continue to hear about growth plans. It just, it feels like things aren't slowing down. Obviously, there's the continued need for skilled workers, as many companies are facing the retirement of longtime employees. Unemployment rates continue to stay, I will call it extremely low, in Medina County. The latest data available is for December 2023, and Medina County's 2.6% unemployment rate is well below the 3.7 level, which is the same at both Ohio and at the national level. In Medina County, we have 96,900 people in the labor force, and only 2,500 of them are either unemployed and seeking work. But our partners, just to put that in context, our partners at Ohio Means Jobs Medina County regularly report that there are usually over 15,000 job openings in the county in any given month. So clearly, we still have a lot of work to do to support our employers trying to find workers. So here's just a couple of updates in our workforce development support programming. Made in Medina County Day is scheduled for March 20th, and this is to continue bringing the spotlight to opportunities in our manufacturing community. So that's kind of like a miniature Made in Medina County Plant Tour Day. It does coincide with Leadership Medina County's Business and Industry Day. We already have nearly a dozen companies confirmed to provide plant tours, and that invitation to register for tours will go out this week. With our pre-apprenticeship program, this school year so far, we have just over 100 students registered to participate in 11 soft skill modules. It will allow them to earn the necessary points for graduation. So far in this program, over the past two school years, we've graduated over 150 students, so that trend continues. Over the past school year, we've been able to sponsor student visits to a variety of businesses, as well as to Magnet Student Engagement Center in Cleveland. I think you know that Will Coran has taken over as our pre-apprenticeship coordinator, and he is working with school counselors throughout the county to expand that program's reach. Our career coach update, Mitchell is in his second full year as a career coach, and Mitchell has nearly doubled the number of one-on-one career coaching sessions with Medina County high school students, mostly seniors, but he's also meeting with juniors in some other classes as well. So as word has gotten out about his ability to help them connect with businesses, he's getting busier and busier. He's also in the process of promoting applications for our work scholarship program so that high school seniors who are intending to go straight into the workforce can qualify for a $1,000, it's a grant, we're calling it a scholarship, to help, you know, put that on par with the other benefits that our graduates are receiving. These applications are due April 1st, and the money can be used pretty much to help them kickstart their careers in Medina County with anything they need. Mitchell is also organizing an engineering expo at Highland High School next month, as well as career fairs with other school districts later in the spring. We're also providing support for businesses looking to do internships. We held a very successful workshop with the Medina County Career Center earlier this month to teach businesses how to set up an internship program, whether it's for high school students or those college students that we're hoping to return to Medina County during the summer, during their college years. We want them to build those connections with our local businesses so that when they graduate, they come back home. We'll be putting together a resource guide of the best practices shared by those experts who spoke at that workshop earlier in February. Couple of other updates on our activities. Community reinvestment area, it's that time of year. Again, over the next month or so, most of our staff will be involved in our CRA tax abatement monitoring. We do manage 11 CRA programs in the townships on behalf of Medina County, and we also handle reporting responsibilities for CRA programs in the Village of Seville and the city of Brunswick. And we'll be back in late March to have you approve the recommendations of those housing councils. We're also keeping our eye on, I'll just say, rumblings in Columbus about another major change to the CRA program. We saw one occur last year. This, this time, they're looking to provide communities with incentives to build more affordable housing. Clearly, we support that goal. But the means that are being talked about will be very problematic for our partners in the school system. We've got some players in the economic development lobbying world who are looking to create a 100% 15-year tax abatement for residential housing. Not so bad, perhaps, but this one would not require approval of the school board. So it kind of cuts out that partnership that we've worked very hard to create in Medina County. The affordable housing challenge, it truly is being felt statewide and as well as the county, and it feels like every week, there's another workshop for economic developers being held to get us involved in finding solutions at the local level. One of the economic development tools that we hope to utilize is a Medina County Land Bank. Since last year, we've been hosting a series of meetings with concerned officials to focus on creating a land bank in Medina County. We recently sent out a survey to community leaders and officials regarding sites that could potentially utilize the powers of a land bank, which can wipe out delinquent taxes as well as environmental liabilities. These are tools that we think could help support affordable housing in our own community. We're also fleshing out the elements of a strategic plan that we would present at that next meeting. Our goal is to get the land bank established in time to apply for state grant funding that would support the development of workforce housing before that June 9th deadline. With the Port Authority, speaking of grants, with the brownfield grant program, we've had the opportunity to reallocate about $330,000 of funds. They were approved in 2022 for one single demolition project. That project never came to fruition. Those, that one grant will now fund five other projects throughout the county that they are expected to be completed this spring. In the December meeting of the Port Authority Board, they also approved the $1.5 million in two different counties set aside grant dollars. There's two major development projects in the city of Medina that were approved. We'll also be applying for several other brownfield and building demolition projects which, for which developers have committed a 25% match. Those applications are due April 1st, and then there'll be another round of funding for those programs opening in July. Capital lease projects, between their December and February board meetings, the Port Authority has approved sales tax savings incentives for two commercial projects in the Medina area, which, if you look at their total planned investment, would account for over $30 million of new investment planned just for this year. Convention and Visitors Bureau update, our new director Shannon Carter is doing a great job with marketing and branding Medina County as a unique destination, and she's focused particularly on overnight visitors. She attended a bus convention in Nashville last month and has attracted quite a lot of interest in the tourist itineraries that the CVB is putting together. Our new Medina County Visitors Guide should be out next month. That's a print version, but we also have an online version, and we're seeing that more and more people are finding Medina County online. Shannon is truly focused on building relationships with social media influencers and other marketing folks, and we've seen some online posts go viral already. I know the ICE Festival this weekend was a big attraction and couldn't have had better weather for it. The CVB is planning a meeting of tourism stakeholders in April, so everyone will have the chance to get to know who the team are and what the plans are to promote opportunities in the county. Wrap up with a quick overview of our events, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Steve Hambley for joining me in our State of the County presentation in January to over 150 business leaders. It was a lively presentation. We've got a lot of commentary, Steve, and it was very well received.
Stuff happened.
Exactly. Coming up next month is our annual meeting. It'll be a dinner at Blue Heron on Thursday, March 21st, featuring a keynote presentation by Medina County's homegrown NASCAR hero, Matt Tifft. Matt graduated from Highland Schools and went into a racing career, then became NASCAR's youngest team owner before he sold it successfully, all while overcoming, you know, major health issues. It's like a soap opera, you're gonna, you're not gonna want to miss it. One final event I wanted to share with you, and we'll be announcing more details in the coming month, but please save the date for a first-of-its-kind event in Medina County. An immigration summit is scheduled for Friday, May 10th. It's designed to explore a policy proposal to help Ohio tackle the logjam in the talent supply chain. And honestly, yes, we are hoping to stir up some controversy here, perhaps, to get people to listen to how important this issue is. We plan to have a morning program that'll start with a networking breakfast. We'll have a series, we'll have a keynote presentation from Logan Kolas of the Buckeye Institute, along with a series of panel discussions involving business leaders in the region. We're planning to bring in a variety of federal and state officials, along with local officials and business executives who truly care about the talent issue. So you won't want to miss that either. That's my report.
Now, to be clear, the two main projects that received that set aside for demolition, the one was the Legacy Hotel, and the other one was the future site of Myers.
Yes, yes. One of the set aside grants was $500,000 to tear down the old Kmart building finally for the new Meyer, and then a million-dollar brownfield grant for the Legacy Hotel project. So those are two, I would say, community-changing and county-changing projects, which are going to make a real difference in our community.
Agreed. And hopefully, going forward, the land bank will enhance the opportunities to do some of those.
There, there are so many new things we can do with a land bank. The state of Ohio is putting more and more money into grant programs that only land banks can apply for, and so Medina County is probably the largest county that doesn't have one, and so we think it's important that we don't miss those opportunities. So we're, we're going to try to get that finished this year.
66 out of 88 counties have land banks.
Yeah.
Yep. So.
I appreciate the kind of education that's gone on, and the, it started in this room, actually, with having the other economic development directors here. Matt, you were here as an economic development director at the time, still. But, but having that forum opened my eyes, because I was thinking of it as a delinquent tax solution, and it was almost a solution without a problem here. But to look at it in terms of how some of the other economic developers have said, no, these are the opportunities we don't have, or the tools we don't have in the toolkit, it seems like a no-brainer. So I appreciate Commissioner Hambley for bringing that to the forefront, and then all of your work in kind of continuing the discussions from there.
And it's not just buildings. I attended a land bank meeting where there was a study done of land banks in the Midwest, and about 70% of the property that is acquired by land banks is vacant land. So it gives us an opportunity to do some land assembly to hopefully make a real difference in the affordable housing situation, because if we can, if we can supply land affordably, then it makes the housing that much more affordable.
Indeed.
Do we have an approximate date for Kmart coming up?
I know that the plan is to demolish this year, so probably sometime this spring. I don't have an exact date, but it should be sometime this spring, before summer starts.
Yeah, good, great. Well, thank you, Bethany.
Thank you.
Great. All right. We have some Commissioners' Resolution, Resolution approving the filing of an F-class temporary permit application to allow the sale of beer during 2024 special events. This is for at the community center at the Fairgrounds. Move to approve?
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Second resolution to approve the appointment of Medina County Commissioner Aaron Harrison to be the alternate representative on the board, of the Board of Commissioners of Medina County to serve on the One Ohio Region 19 Governance Board. Move to approve?
Second.
Move to second. I would just comment, we're approving the bylaws. Our, the One Ohio Region 19 Governance Board meeting tomorrow, and with those bylaws requires an alternate to be designated. So at this point, we'll complete that. So, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And then we have a resolution amending the appointments of County Commissioners, various committees, areas of responsibilities, and that takes into account the last resolution. Move to approve?
Second.
Move second. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And then the last resolution is authorizing the purchase and installation of hearing loops for use at the Medina County Courthouse. Move to approve?
Second.
Move to second. I just want to thank Commissioner Swedick for her work on this and getting this and moving it forward.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Now open up the public comment.
You're back.
Welcome. Okay, with that discussion session, Chris, do you have anything? Okay. Matt, anything for us? Bethany, anything more?
I, now that we've passed these resolutions, I will get hold of the sheriff, I mean sheriff, judge rep reunitives to schedule a date, because it, we do need a three- or four-month date out for them to be able to schedule their trials and so forth.
They have control of the courthouse.
Yes, they do. So we'll get, we'll get some, we're probably going to need at least two dates, so we'll shoot for Fridays and.
Yeah, good. Is there any of that work that can be done over the weekend, or is that?
The problem is then security, then we're paying for sheriff's security, so I'm trying to avoid that.
It's a question I should have known not to ask.
Yes, yes. So we'll shoot for, try to get two judges one, done one Friday and two the others, so split it.
Great.
No, I'm glad that's moving forward.
Yeah.
All right.
I, Bethany, two things I wanted to step off on from her comments. One was the ICE Festival, it was a great weekend. If you're going to have an ICE Festival, this is the type of weekend. There was some snow, there was plenty of cold. So, and it's great to see all the people here in our community, who likely, a good chunk of them aren't from here, so that was great. And then also, you mentioned labor issues. Was that, was that 15,000 job openings on average? So a significant portion of those, by the way, this is something that's brought to my attention at a Rotary meeting a couple of weeks ago, are, all of our school districts are looking for bus drivers. Our Transit Department is also looking for bus drivers. So I think in an upcoming newsletter, we'll probably see an article about, specific to drivers, if there are any drivers who are looking for positions, those positions are readily available to be filled, particularly with, with transit. I think Shannon's going to have some, some comments on that as well, that they can be filled even in a part-time role. So if there are people who are, have that skill set and are looking for even a job, you know, in retirement or something of that nature, you know, those are, those opportunities are out there, along with plenty of others with a lot of good Medina County employers. So just, you know, hopefully, people are getting the message out. I don't, I don't think there are that many people who are looking for work, as our unemployment numbers would suggest, but to the extent there are, are just people who are looking for some additional, you know, things that they can do in retirement, these opportunities are out there. So kind of a call to action there.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, I, last week, we did talk about the Liberty residence over in Wadsworth, and I know there was then a subsequent stories, and that, I did talk with the attorney that represented the owner of that property, was able to clarify some of the information we had regarding the average rentals. It still represents a sizable increase in the, in the rental costs for those residents there. And I just, we also got a copy of the rental agreements, and it's a year-to-year rental, but there's significant fees that have to be paid on a yearly basis in addition to the monthly rental as part of that assisted living. We are, and thanks to Laura Toth with Office for Adults, stepping up to organize a meeting with the residents tomorrow, actually, with a number of agencies to help provide some assistance. I know Ed Zachary with Veteran Services indicated in an email to us that they met with about 40 people in that residence that are affected. It's, it's a much larger number than, well, I know some were family members. It appears to be much larger than maybe the attorney had provided us with that number of affected people. But we are going to be having a meeting tomorrow, the county agencies, with the individuals and just as well as the owner, and I think the attorney will be there as well, talk about how we can help assist either for them to stay there or to find other facilities elsewhere. I know they're looking outside the county for the opportunities. When you have that dislocation of that great, that number, we can see what we can do to assist them in making through this time period. So it is part of that overall squeeze at the lower end. Rents are going up, and it's just those that don't have much more of a fixed income having difficulty affording it. So I think those are issues because of lack of supply, just pushing up the price. If you read the stories in Columbus and elsewhere, as well as statewide, that is the issue. It really is a supply issue in a lot of ways. And I think, looking at, looking at the opportunities for policy changes at the Columbus may not be exactly what we've interested in seeing. 100% abatement on residential property on households sounds good on the one side, but if you're a school district that now has to educate those children, somebody's going to make up that revenue, and it'll be, everybody else is paying taxes. We'll have to. So I think those are issues, obviously, at the state level, but also local level. We'll have to continue to try to assist people as best we can, and the resources as they, what's going on in the market. So we're, we're a very desirable county to live in, and a lot of high demand and good quality of life, and people are attracted here, and we want to keep it that way, for sure.
And one of the emails that was going back and forth was about Medicaid eligibility. Have you learned if that facility will be or won't be?
Don't know. I guess that's why we're, we're having, I think Laura's, we're bringing the right people. Job and Family Services is sending somebody over there, would be first in line if we're to. to help look at the eligibility requirements. So we're, we're going to work and assist. Apparently, as I understand from the attorney, they had put a cap on that, the prior owners had put a cap as the number of individuals that would, if you will, be eligible for, applying for Medicare?
Medicaid.
Medicaid, excuse me, Medicaid. And I didn't realize that assisted living, that could actually do that. I thought if you were eligible, you were eligible. But I, like I said, I'm kind of learning quite a bit about the facilities and how they're operated, and we'll try to work with them, make sure that these are trying times.
Well, and again, it's Medicaid doesn't, it's not an automatic service either.
Exactly right.
You've got a spend-down requirement and other things that have implications for those residents that it may not be, they may not be willing to, may not be time for it, they might not be eligible, and there might be other things that...
It is, it is about the eligibility, and I know the legal community has certain tools, if I could use that term, to enable them to set aside resources that don't get counted towards Medicaid eligibility requirements. And, and I know there's actually fees associated with that, having an attorney develop those trust mechanisms, be able to do that. So these are very complicated.
Right.
Complicated. So we'll, we'll assist them as, as they're entitled to resources and help assist them in this, so.
And again, I do think that, from our perspective, it's, it's a shame that it's happening, but it's a great demonstration of the power of the collaborative resources that can come together with Fair Housing, with Job and Family Services, with Office of Older Adults, Veteran Services. So I appreciate all of our department's willingness to kind of lean in and provide resources where they can.
Yeah, and I think, and this also includes some other members of the Housing Network, which are the nonprofit, the, I'll just say, the faith-based community has resources that have lent towards individuals looking for housing. We definitely don't want to see anybody without a home, so this is, just helps answer that call. That's why we have a comprehensive plan in place. We've done the planning, hopefully move in a lot of different ways to expand the, if you will, the resources for housing.
I think you've done a great job mobilizing everybody that can, that can help.
Well, we've got great department staff making this happen, so.
Where is that meeting going to be held?
It'll be at Liberty Residence, but it's by invitation. It is a private facility. So this is, we've been invited, and we've worked, we've, it's not a general public kind of thing, but it's, it's meant to, we've got county agencies as well as some other members of the Housing Network, faith-based, that can offer some resources. Great. And that's, that's what we're hoping to do.
And that's why only Steve's going, so it's not a public meeting.
Well, the intention is, these people are entitled to their privacy as well, and I think we're respectful of that. And we'll, we'll work with them. They've reached out to us. This is a better way to organize and, and kind of work through each of our, if you will, little, I'll just say, each public entity has requirements for the use of certain funds, which is the way it ought to be, and we want to, they have to make sure that they do meet those requirements. So, but we're gonna look and see what multitude of resources that are available publicly to assist where it's appropriate. And if they need more counseling, there'll be some financial advisors there as well, we can help them in that way, or we can even provide names of other individuals they can to best utilize their resources to help either stay there or find an appropriate place. So.
Are there any private sector people invited to the meeting, like Redwood, or, you know, that are providing independent living for seniors?
No, this is just with them and that, but we're, we're, that...
I mean, they build hundreds of units.
Yeah, but the average rent, and those are like $1,800 or more, but this is an assisted living facility. So Redwood does not do assisted living, that I know of.
No, independent.
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't, isn't it independent?
No, they're moving to all assisted living.
No, understood, but people that are being displaced or want to be independent?
Well, I guess while rather engaging on this, I'd be glad to talk to you offline. As my understanding from the current owner that it was running, even though it's classified as independent living, many of them were assisted living. They had a multitude of services that essentially they, his contention is they weren't paying for it, so therefore it was underpriced, and so they're trying to bring it up and provide, but they're doing a, a flat-level fee rather than a graduated fee based on the services provided. But going from a model where many came in there years ago and then slowly needed services, they're trying to find a way to make it economically feasible for them. And the new owners, I'm not discounting, their good intentions of trying to move this, but it's, it's a matter of the timing for many of these.